Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I'd ask you to please rise for beef invocation to be found by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in a regular session, we are ever mindful of the many challenges and decisions and opportunities that lie before us. We are thankful for all the blessings that have been showered upon our community over these many years, and the many, many dedicated people who have served our city in our police and fire and public works and administrative roles for so long, and that we are a community that shines the results of some hard-placed, dedicated workmanship and administration by a number of generations in this town. Tonight, we want to remember our director of our computer department, Howard Chason. He has had a family issue. His mother's recently suffered a stroke, and he is dealing with the challenges of that. So we just ask for a special blessing, be showered on a member of our city and family. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that those and all those serving from our country with them are showered with blessings as they go upon their most able glories. Tonight, we just ask for guidance and direction and understanding and appreciation as we act on the various items before us, knowing that each and every member of the council is here tonight in their best hearts and minds to do what is in the best interests of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Stark, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Alderman Atack is absent. Stark.
Here.
Alderman Chantet is absent.
Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Fisher is absent. Alderman O'Brien is absent. Callahan.
Here.
Alderman Homan is absent. Mueller.
Here.
Bottermann.
Here.
Alderman Saron is absent. McFadden.
Here.
Well, let the record reflect that despite the absence of six members of the City Council, we do have the necessary eight to conduct business. So we are thankful for that because without it, we would be postponing this to another time and occasion. So let the record reflect that we are legal and in business. Moving to item number four then, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. In the absence of Alderman Atack, Alderman McFadden.
Yes. I request to take item G from the approvals on the consent agenda and move that to item ten A. That's all I have.
Anything else? And I guess I'd entertain a motion for the proposed changes in the agenda, and the agenda is then approved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Rosado, for the approval of the agenda amended. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Alderman McFadden, if you would present it, please.
Thank you, yes. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes from January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, the September, October, November, and December twenty fifteen financials, and the January twenty sixteen building report. Approvals are: D, the February eleventh, twenty sixteen payroll in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent; the accounts payable check register, amount of one million, thirty-three dollars, one million, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-one cents; F, ordinance ten, or ordinance sixteen oh seven, the prevailing wage ordinance; H, ordinance sixteen oh four, amending Title eleven, chapters two and five of the Batavia Municipal Code subdivision regulations; resolution sixteen oh eight R, tax abatement for general obligation bond refunding series twenty twelve A; resolution sixteen oh nine R, tax abatement, general obligation bond refunding series twenty thirteen; resolution sixteen ten R, tax abatement, general obligation bond refunding series twenty fifteen; resolution sixteen fourteen R, authorizing a representative to sign loan documents; resolution sixteen twelve R, authorizing execution of the local agency agreement for federal participation for the Wilson Street LAFO resurfacing Reddant Road to Kirk Road project with the Illinois Department of Transportation; resolution sixteen thirteen R, authorizing execution of the construction engineering services agreement for the federal participation for the Wilson Street LAFO resurfacing, Reddant Road to Kirk Road, with AECOM; resolution sixteen dash seventeen R, approving and accepting a plat dedicating a portion of South Drive; and resolution sixteen dash eighteen R, approving a plat of dedication for the portion of Randall Road. Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Your Honor, we removed G, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, because I wanted, I wasn't sure if that was the prevailing wage or not. I just wanted to let everybody know that even though I'm voting for this, it's because it's on a consent agenda and there's only eight of us here, I would normally vote against prevailing wage act.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda is approved. Eight yes, no no's, six absent. Okay, moving then to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that has anything in the public? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come up and use the podium, please. Give us your name.
My name is Jan Bradley. Do you need my address?
Sure, go ahead if you would.
Five twenty-two State Street in Batavia. I grew up in Batavia. I was in this chambers twelve years ago as a corrections employee, presenting this council with a plaque of appreciation from the workers of Illinois Youth Center, St. Charles. This body signed a resolution in support of keeping the youth center open when our previous governor wanted to close it. You supported our kids that needed to be kept near their families instead of being moved eight hours south to southern Illinois. Today, I return once again to ask you to help our kids, but this time, it's our own kids. We have almost a hundred possibly Batavia High School kids that spend time at a known drug house on State Street. October ninth, two thousand and fifteen is when I first noticed this activity. I made police aware of this the second week in October of two thousand and fifteen. I have documented sixty-one different vehicle plates. Each vehicle usually has a few kids in it. I've passed this information on to authorities. I have recorded illegal activity. I have observed drug sales, drug use, alcohol consumption by minors, public urination, and have reported it. The neighbors have observed illegal activity as well. Based on my frustration of this continued activity, I passed out flyers to the neighbors to encourage them to report the illegal activity. I have posted a sign outside my house, warning these juveniles that police will be called for drug activity. I have requested extra patrol. I have spoken to several police officers, a detective, assistant police chief, the mayor, Northern Illinois State Police Drug Task Force Commander, who told me Batavia declined their assistance, Department of Children and Family Services, even the kid's own father, who confirmed his daughter's drug use and issues. And still, today, this activity continues. There's a common message with all my discussions with officials. They try to assure me the residents are moving soon. These comments started in November of two thousand and fifteen. My answer each time has been consistent. My concern is all these parents that do not know what their kids are doing over there and what they're involved in. Also, if they do move, these kids will just find another house to get their drugs and alcohol from, possibly in Batavia. If they move across the street of any of your houses, how long would this be allowed to continue? I ask you, the City Council, please do whatever you have to do, whatever is in your power, to help these kids before they end up dead of an overdose. Another high school kid dead of an overdose. Or they commit a more serious crime and end up in jail. If any of you'd like more personal information regarding a possible conflict of interest, I can talk to you in person, or you, I've given my address, you can come to my house. I'll give you some personal information that I don't think that you want me to discuss in public. I also have a short letter from an eighty-six-year-old woman who wanted me to read this because she could not be here tonight. My name is Alberta Fillmore. I live at five fourteen State Street in Batavia. I writing this because I have fallen and injured myself and cannot walk. Otherwise, I would be here in person. I have lived in Batavia all my life, eighty-six years, and lived at five fourteen State Street for fifty to sixty years. It's been a very quiet neighborhood until about six months ago when drug activities started across from my house, or kitty-corner from my house. I see delivery of drugs, cars parked by my house, and they walk to that house, the house I'm talking about, and they'll bring drugs back and forth. I have seen teenagers smoking drugs in front of this house. There's cars coming and going at all hours of the night and day. They keep me awake. I have never seen such going on, goings-on in my life in this neighborhood until now. It has been six months since it started. I've spoken to police. I wish you would do something about it so we can get our quiet neighborhood back. And this is an eighty-six-year-old woman, next sentence, the way that I imagine the eighty-six-year-old woman speaks. Please quit dragging your feet and do something about it. Thank you.
Senator Jan, as you and I know, you and I have talked a number of times in the last few weeks about this particular item. I can tell you, I check on it almost every day myself with the Batavia Police Department. They are spending a lot of time on this, and as you know, there have been several arrests made with folks that have been coming in and out of here. I'm told there's more coming, but we, sometimes we have to do certain things the right way, in the legal way, and that's where we're at. But I am told that we are definitely on top of this thing, and I have no reason to, you know, believe otherwise.
And I invite you, Bayer, any Friday, Saturday, night of the week, whatever, come over, sit at my dining room table, and look and see what me and my family have to look at. I've invited the police over. I'll leave. Come sit at my table, and you can see it with your own eyes. I have video of it. No one's asked to see that. I have detailed documentation. No one's asked to see that, so...
Well, thank you. You shared with me your detailed documentation.
Oh, yeah, I shared with you. I definitely shared it with you.
I got it all. Trust me, I know. So...
So, we just want it to stop. It's going on six months now, and like I said, my concern is one of these kids is going to end up dead.
And as I've told you, we have had this situation in other parts of the community, in other parts of the town, and in all these situations, there's always extenuating circumstances where in some of them, we have other agencies that are working with us that are watching things and are interested in gathering information. So there is an ongoing investigation here going on, and I really can't get into the details of it, but we are watching it with great diligence. I'm convinced of that, knowing what I know the department is actively doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we will move then to item number seven, and I see we have Jamie and Kathy in the audience, or Kurt, you're gonna be the speaker?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Every year, I get to come up and give a review of what Main Street did in the previous year and talk about what our plans are for the coming year. You know, this year, as we went through our planning stages and reviewed our last year, it was a really exciting time to look back and see that the growth that the organization has had over the last twelve months and what we are, you know, projecting for the coming year in two thousand and sixteen. A little bit of, for those of you who are new and haven't seen me talk about this before, a little background on Batavia Main Street and where it came from. Batavia Main Street was, started back in nineteen ninety-eight. It came out of, there was a community survey that was done, and one of the main things that the citizens of Batavia wanted to see was a revitalized downtown. So part of what was put together from, that came out of that survey was Batavia Main Every year, again, when we sit down, we review, we always review and read aloud our mission and vision, and keeping in mind as we go through our planning that all of our work plans, the number-one thing that we look at is that, does any project, work plan, or event that we put together meet both our mission and vision? And if it doesn't, it doesn't get done. If it does, it moves forward. So I'll read aloud, as we do at all of our annual meetings, "The Batavia Main Street program is a not-for-profit, community-based organization devoted to enhancing downtown Batavia's identity as the heart of the community through dedicated volunteer efforts. And our vision is to help create a unique and vital downtown that enriches the business community, embraces history, celebrates the arts, preserves our natural environment, and promotes quality events to instill a sense of place in our community." I think one of the things that we have really seen over the last several years is that sense of place continue to grow in Batavia. We take a lot of pride in that. So how does it get paid for? Our two thousand and sixteen budget breaks down like this. We have seen a very substantial increase in both our fundraising and program initiatives. Our, the SSA does provide us with forty thousand dollars of funding, as well as forty thousand dollars in city contribution as well. Our leadership for two thousand and sixteen coming up, you know, one of the big changes in two thousand and fifteen, as most of you know, is we said goodbye to Joy Cottaro, who had served as our executive director for quite some time, and everybody, anybody who met Joy knew what an absolute phenomenal resource she was to this community in Batavia Main Street. And as we, you know, move forward and, you know, we all sit around wondering how are we ever going to replace her? Well, what it came down to is there were two people who were very, very ready and perfectly qualified to step up. So Jamie Sam and Kathy McNally came on as director and assistant director, and Batavia Main Street has not missed a beat with them coming on. They have both not just met, but exceeded our expectations since they have come on board, so, thank you. How do we work? Primarily, we function with partnerships, not just on the national, state level, and local as well. As far as our national programs, we are part of the National Main Street. We work very closely with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, former Illinois Main Street community, and then everything in downtown Batavia. I think that there are probably, you know, too many organizations that we partner with for me to mention all, because I would definitely forget a few. So how do we work as well? We follow what's called the National Main Street Four Point approach. That is a proven strategy for revitalization. It does focus heavily on leveraging local assets and puts, provides a very comprehensive strategy for how we work to both promote and revitalize our downtown. So this is split up. Basically, we divide and conquer. This four-point approach gives us four committees. The Design Committee, which focuses on downtown beautification; our Promotion, which helps promote our businesses and our special events; Organization Committee, which focuses on the volunteer recruitment and fundraising efforts; and our Economic Restructuring Committee, that works closely with the city to both retain and recruit new businesses to downtown. So for two thousand and sixteen, we plan, we have eighteen active work plans that we will put into play throughout two thousand, throughout the next year. With that, with those twenty-eight work plans, that gives us sixty-eight events for two thousand and sixteen that everyone can participate and attend. So we estimate that that will bring a little over sixty thousand people to downtown Batavia. And this is a number that has continued to increase year after year at our events. I remember, I think the first time that I stood up here three years ago and gave this presentation, we were bragging about thirty thousand people. So to see the growth that we've had as far as bringing people into this downtown has been absolutely phenomenal. So a couple successes from two thousand and fifteen I'd like to share. One of our big ones is the holiday market. And the holiday market actually spawned from a group of retailers wanting to actually be able to showcase and promote downtown in a market environment. We started this in two thousand and fourteen and had eighteen vendors. Just in one-year timeframe, that has grown to fifty vendors that we had in two thousand and fifteen, expanded to multiple days. In two thousand and sixteen, we are actually planning on adding a third day to this as well. You know, the number that I've heard is somewhere between two and three thousand people that attended this, this event in two thousand and fifteen. So huge growth there. The indoor market, as everybody who drives down River Street during, or drives down Wilson Street and passes River Street in the summer and sees how packed it is from our farmer's market, that averages about twenty-five hundred people every single, every single Saturday. Because of the success of that, we actually moved that, when the weather got bad, we moved our farmer's market indoors over at Gaetano's, where we have utilized both his upper and downstairs level and brought sixteen vendors into there. This was only planned to go through the, end it through December. However, the success of that has caused us, we are now expanding that through, up until the outdoor market actually starts in the spring. So, again, continued growth there. So the success that we've had as far as the impact on downtown, and just in two thousand and fifteen, there were eleven new businesses opened in Batavia. Obviously, we can't claim credit for all of that, but we like to think we'd help a little. There were four businesses that either were retained or expanded, which took over thirteen thousand square feet of space off the market and over fifty jobs that were created in Again, I get to brag about our awards. Every year, we go down to the Illinois Main Streets Conference, and now for, this is four years in a row out of...
Fifty-six Main Street communities now?
Around that, in the state of Illinois. There are four different, there are four lieutenant governor awards given every year at this conference. Four years in a row now, Batavia Main Street has won three out of the four. So we're very proud that for Design, our downtown banner program won this year. Our Organization Committee won for Cocktails in the Park, which has become one of the favorite events of downtown, and our Economic Restructuring Committee won for the Bicycle Friendly Business Work Plan. That is a work plan that I, we're working with the Bicycle Commission on and has seen, again, huge growth, and the potential for where that particular program can go is absolutely exponential when we look at how many bikers go past us on this pass every single weekend, and how to capture them and bring them into our downtown. So who makes us tick? We've seen our leadership, but really what makes Batavia Main Street tick is everyone in this room, everyone in this community, all of our volunteers, city, local organizations. When I look at, you know, our group that gets together and volunteers, it really is an army of volunteers that we have. You know, last year alone, I believe the number was just over fifteen hundred volunteers that donated their time. You start to break that down to an hourly, hourly wage of, you know, over a thousand hours of their time that are being donated. It's a, it's a pretty good investment. Oh, that's okay. Okay, so some exciting, some more exciting news. In two thousand and sixteen, we have been working together to actually provide link accessibility to the farmer's market. What this allows, what this allows us to do is to bring people down to shop that may not otherwise have the ability to come shop and, you know, have the availability of the produce, the food, the local, you know, the local-grown products that we provide at the farmer's market here. Another new, an exciting event coming up is Oktoberfest and, coming up, and this is, what's exciting about this is this spawned from a group of business owners in Batavia that got together and started working on it and brought this to us. And one of the things that we always, you know, like to encourage is our community getting together and working. We've had a work plan designated directly to that for several years now, and to see businesses that in some senses might actually be competing businesses, restaurants and things of that nature, get together at a table, work together, and come up with an event like this that I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is going to be huge, because there's nothing else like it in the area, is fantastic to see. And it really does show, when I talk about that sense of place that is being created in Batavia here, is what makes us really excited. So there is a couple updates on the Illinois Main Street program. Due to funding cuts, there is no longer a Illinois Main Street Coordinator or an Illinois Main Street program. That doesn't mean that there's not a national Main Street program, which we are still a part of. And one of the, one of the things that, you know, makes us as a community so strong is that our directors have gone out and we've started working with other Main Street communities to continue, without the help of the state, exactly what we've been doing. In fact, as early as tomorrow, there are, I believe, twelve other directors from Main Street communities coming here to Batavia to sit down and talk about these very things, as well as thoroughly representatives from the DCEO and the, and from Northern Illinois, talking about how to continue the educational and training programs before that were brought by Illinois Main Street. We're proud to look that other communities want to come here to learn about those things. We've always been a Main Street that other communities have come to try and replicate what we're doing. So that makes us really proud, and it's exciting to see how both Jamie and Kathy have taken the initiative to continue to push this, you know, push this forward. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you guys have.
Questions from the council? You know, I just would offer, given what I know as the issues that we are faced with in the state of Illinois, we are indeed fortunate here to have a Main Street program that's so well established and so well managed that we can keep ourselves going with our head highly above water and not have to worry about any of this crap from the state of Illinois. And unfortunately, there's some of the rest of them around, and I had some other mayors ask me about this program, that, you know, dig into it and find out that there's nobody out there to help them put this thing on the street and get it going. So it's kind of a, you know, sink or swim, every person for themselves in this deal. And I'm just very proud of the fact that Batavia is so strongly managed and run that, you know, we can keep right on rolling, and we don't really need to worry about the state of Illinois. So thank you, Kurt, and Jamie and Kathy, and all those on your board who do so much to help us attain that, that recognition. And it's nice to have people wanting to come to Batavia and see what we're doing here because... because I think it speaks wonders about everything that this town's all about. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right. I am going to turn it briefly over to Jamie and Kathy now to go over the winners of this year's banner program. Thank you.
All right. Sorry to take up so much of your time tonight, but this is fun. So as we've presented to you guys before, we do the banner program and we work with the Batavia High School Advanced Graphics Class. And this year, Kathleen, here, come up here so they can see you. This is Kathleen, Mrs. T., because I'm going to mutilate your last name. She was awesome and just such a great leader for these kids with the program that we asked her to work on with them. So basically, they were all asked to design banners. And then we put it in a little competition, put it on Facebook, you guys know all the details, and we're going to present the winners. And these banners will be up on Thirty-one and on Main, or on Wilson Street for spring, summer, winter, fall. We were also asked by the Public Works Department to do companion banners, which is awesome because of our beautiful Houston Street and River Street. So we had those printed as well. So you will see just continuity through the downtown. It's going to be pretty awesome. So, oh. Do I talk about all of this? Sure. I don't know what else I can add other than the whole, the whole class got to participate. It was really fun to see how the students interpreted their community and things that they kind of latched onto and wanted to show off. So it was really fun. I wish we could have had so many more of them put together because there's a lot of really great work. And it was really fun. Welcome to Batavia for me because this is my first year at the high school and I was in transition to move out here and so now I'm here. And I just love walking through the community already and seeing like Angela's posters out for other projects. And so I'm really, really looking forward to, when I cut through River Street to work every day, I can get to see all of this up. So thank you for supporting this great work by the students. And Main Street is awesome. I love them. They were, they were a great welcome to Batavia as well. Okay, so for spring, we have Ryan Bamrick.
Jamie, maybe why don't we have him wait up here when we get all of them up here and we can put them in the center and then we can have it, pick some pictures taken for TV.
For summer, Drew Henning. For summer, this one will be on River Street because obviously it goes with our farmer's And then for our overall summer, or, oh, we did summer, right? For fall, we have Cameron Erickson. So enjoy for the next two years. Those are our beautiful banners in downtown. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I've had people who have seen those comment to me that looks like something out of Madison Avenue. So we get high compliments from people who are just laying their eyes on them for the first time. So thank you for an outstanding job to really make Batavia shine from a banner perspective. Excellent. Alderman Callahan?
And just to piggyback on all, they were all fantastic, but Angela is also a statewide-recognized one for being one of the, if y'all remember, one of the top five finalists for the USS Illinois's crest of everybody in the United, everybody in the state of Illinois. So you might want to grab some of her artwork now before she goes to be big and famous.
Very good. Well, thank you all for coming down tonight. Very special. Okay, moving back to item number eight, which is a proclamation for 2016 Engineering Week. Who's got this one? Alderman McFadden?
Yes. Proclamation for Engineering Week reads as follows. Whereas engineering services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of engineering programs such as streets, water, wastewater, stormwater, and development, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of engineering officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the engineering department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shulkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of February twenty-first to twenty-seventh, 2016, as National Engineers' Week in the City of Batavia. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our engineers and to recognize the contributions of which engineering officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed, Mayor Shulkey. Make a motion that we accept the proclamation as presented.
Second. Move by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Bottermann for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk Colerole.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusada?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
And let the record reflect, Alderman Fisher has entered.
Oh, hello, Alderman Fisher.
He has entered the building. Aye. I apologize for being late.
All right. And your vote on that one?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that one's approved. Nine yes, no-nos, and five absent. Gary Holmes, Holmes sick with the flu, so wastewater treatment plant is the only one here tonight from Public Works, so would you like to come up and, or I can just pass it over?
I can certainly take it and, uh, forget it.
Well, why don't we just, I don't mean to have you, we'll just pass it over to Byron and he can take it out. Thank you, Byron. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is the Sixth Amendment to the TRICOM Intergovernmental Agreement. Who's got this one? Alderman McFadden?
Yeah, I have this. This was an agreement we discussed last week at the COW. And as we have, Alderman Stark is our representative to the TRICOM Board. I'd ask if she would say a few words about this.
Okay, thank you, Alderman McFadden. I am the City Council of Batavia, Representative for the TRICOM Board. TRICOM was formed in nineteen seventy-six with St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia as the three dispatch members, and they formed an agency to be able to handle dispatch for police and fire. Over the years, the agreement was updated and subsequently amended in seventy-nine, eighty-five, eighty-six, and two thousand and thirteen. And this year, the amendment, this Sixth Amendment is to establish, excuse me, the number of board members on the, of the Board of Directors, as well as to set an updated cost formula for the members. And so the members now, it's part of this agreement that will set a user fee and a usage fee for each member, as well as establish that there are to be three directors from Batavia, St. Charles, and Geneva on the Board of Directors. In Batavia, it's the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, Chief Daiki and Chief Shira and me, and very similar arrangement in St. Charles and Geneva. And so what this does is it just puts it in writing, and you will see as time goes by, other surrounding communities will probably be joining TRICOM. There are a few other cities who are already part of TRICOM, and for some unknown reason, they just go right out of my mind. Sugar Grove?
North Aurora.
North Aurora.
And Elburn.
Elburn. And Sugar Grove?
And Sugar Grove.
And Sugar Grove, okay. So Sugar Grove, North Aurora, and Elburn are the three additional cities that are with the Batavia, St. Charles, and Geneva. And so this, I would move, I would make the motion that we approve the Sixth Amendment to the TRICOM Intergovernmental Agreement.
Second.
Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the Sixth Amendment to the TRICOM Intergovernmental Agreement. Any discussion? Kirk Colerole.
Stark?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusada?
Aye.
The Sixth Amendment to the TRICOM Intergovernmental Agreement is approved by a vote of nine yes, no-nos, and five absent. As I've said before, I think I said at committee meeting, TRICOM was asked, we were asked to come in and do a presentation to the Governor Ronner's Recent Governmental Consolidation Committee up at Elgin Community College, which is a statewide group. And I participated in that presentation. At the end of it, we were told that this is about as good as it gets. This is a model. This is what everybody else should be doing. So I felt real good about that, that given the long time history we have here and how we've continued to expand this service and provide this high quality of service in a cooperative fashion, we are now being told we're the model that everybody should look, emulate. So I feel real good that we're doing something right here. So, moving then to item number ten, which is Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one dash R., Authorizing Application for Kane County Riverboat Fund Grant. And who's got this one? Has somebody got it?
Your Honor, we'll just, the administrator left a message for me on Friday wanting to know if it'd be okay to put this on. I didn't get a chance to get back to him. He went ahead and put it back on, so I'll just let the chief go ahead and explain what this is all about.
During the 2016 budget hearings, the electronic signs for the two fire stations were turned down for, under economic constraints. And it just recently came to our attention that the riverboat grant, that the signs are eligible for funds under the riverboat grant if awarded. And so for, for the grant, it's a fifty percent match on the city's part, so it would be a match of nineteen thousand dollars on the city if we were awarded the grant. So the, the question before you is, are you interested in me writing the grant or not? And if we are, then we need a resolution, and that's the resolution that's on the, on the docket for today.
Well, what we were trying to do with these signs is put them at both the east, one at each of the east and west side fire stations, correct?
That is correct.
And then these would serve as kind of an informational, welcome to Batavia entry sign. I think they would be a very appropriate place because most people enter Batavia from the east on Wilson Street and certainly on West Main Street, where we're right across the street from Batavia High School, so we could also double with what's happening on the football field or whatever else may be happening over there, weather information, et cetera, et cetera. You know, this has been a long, kind, running discussion of the city as to whether or not we should even allow electronic signs. And a few years ago, we finally agreed to do that, and our friends down at Mooseheart couldn't wait to get one erected down at Mooseheart and Randall Road. I will tell you, they are the wave of the future. I've been in other towns nearby, and these are used as the city limit entry signs. They're constantly, they're not only telling the population, but they're telling what you, what you can and cannot do, whether you're welcome or not welcome, depending on what you want to bring in or what you're trying to pull off. And so I just think that, you know, sign of the times, this is something we've got to do. I certainly supported the action by the council in the last meeting, at the budget discussions, to remove it just because of the financial constraints. But if, in fact, we were successful in putting this together, this would go a long way toward funding the two signs in Batavia, and I would encourage us to do this.
I'm okay with it. I, I think that that would also be a great use of, you know, if that nineteen thousand dollars were to come out of the property proceeds that we got on selling the property.
Yeah, there's different ways to find the money.
Sure, we can find the money for that.
I'm just saying...
That's one I think we could take it from.
Anybody else have a, want to turn in on this? If not, then I guess we have a Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one dash R. that we should have somebody make a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf. Okay, and let the record reflect that Alderman O'Brien has just entered the meeting.
Sorry.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second for the approval of Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one dash R., Authorizing Application for Kane County Riverboat Fund Granting for the purchase of the two electronic signs, as we have just discussed. Any further comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I am concerned that we will pass this resolution that will authorize the application for the grant and, but then deny the money to go along with it. So I, and we've seen this happen before where we've asked staff to go ahead and do something and then when it comes back, then we say, no, we're not going to fund it. So I would like some guarantee from the council that we, this won't come back to us and we won't waste the chief's time writing the grant and then not be able to fund it. And I don't know how we would do that.
I don't know how you do that, but, I mean, the political winds blow in all directions and you, you know, everybody could be for it today and six weeks from now, they could be...
I know, that's why I was wondering if we could...
I mean, this is a statement of public policy that probably affects every item in the budget. I mean, if you want to put it that way, we could say, well, we approved it, something in the budget at the end, beginning of the year, and then we get to spend it and we say, no, we don't want to spend it. I know exactly what you're talking about, but in this world of volatility that we live in, in this world of quickly diminishing governmental support from anybody other than ourselves, you know, I guess I think we should try to at least fire a rocket at anything that maybe we can land on and maybe we can't. But I think in this moment of governmental business, this is probably wise counsel to do this. Given that we may have a political turnaround, it would, I would suggest that if we did this and we got the grant and then we decided we didn't want to spend the money, we would really shortstop the city of Batavia from serious consideration for any other future money. So we would literally be shooting ourselves, I think, in the political foot if we were to do it that way.
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown?
I, I made the motion to support the resolution, so I will support it. And I, I'm glad Susan brought this up because at the last COW meeting, we had some discussion, as you know, about the, whether or not we should bring on or entertain the idea of a communications person. And that was pretty much kind of denied or disapproved based on the fact that at budget time, we had the discussion about it and that expense was taken out at budget time. So the reasoning kind of was, well, if we took it out at budget time, why should we be entertaining it two months later? This is very similar. This was discussed at the budget time also and taken out at, at that time because there just wasn't funds for it. You know, I, just like you, I agree. I mean, you know, we shouldn't be money hungry and grabbing at everything we can, but then again, if the money is there, if the grant funding is there, we should be taking advantage of it. And I kind of feel like, you know, I supported the signs at the budget time. I didn't want to see them taken out, but the vote came down the way the vote came down, and I support the vote. But with this being here in front of us and this being an opportunity to take advantage of the grant if we can, you know, we do have, as has been mentioned, there's, there's other sources for the, the funding for our portion, you know, the sale of property that we've been doing and kind of putting away for capital development, economic development reasons. So even though this was taken out at the time in a budget, I would support it now. I do think Susan's right, though, if you don't feel like you're going to want to support it, if we are awarded the grant, then vote no for it now, so we don't waste staff's time.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one dash R. dash 21 dash R, authorizing application for Kane County Riverboat Fund grant for the two electronic city signs. Kirk Coldero.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Starr?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
So that one was approved, we now have 10. 10 yes, no nos and four absents. All right, and then through the action of the consent agenda, we're going to now go to item 10A, which was G on the approvals of the consent agenda, which is Resolution 16 dash 11 dash R, Task Force, Task Force, Task Force Order Eight, Engineering Services with Trotter and Associates for Design Engineering at the wastewater treatment plant.
Your Honor, I'll take it. Mike just walked in. He doesn't have his paperwork with him. I'll take it if you want me to.
I just came from a wake.
Yeah.
I do apologize. Thank you.
Go ahead.
No problem.
Alderman Brown?
So this resolution is Resolution 16 dash 11 dash R and it authorizes Trotter for Task Order Number Eight. The reason why we thought we should pull it off the consent agenda and talk about it a little bit is because it's a very significant project that we are going to be undertaking, we are undertaking in our wastewater treatment facility and, and our utility there. It's a well over $20 million project that's going to go on for multi-years and there's going to be more and more of these that we're going to see in front of us. This one is for 1.3, $1,335,600. There's a couple phases to this task order. The first phase will include the rehabilitation of the existing infrastructure and the incorporation of chemical phosphorus removal capabilities to address the current regulatory requirements. And then the second phase will be to include the expansion of the facility from 4.2 million gallons a day to 4.9 as well as additional rehabilitation of the existing infrastructure, including the excess flow facilities, primary clarifiers and sludge thickening, sludge thickening facilities. It's, there's the memo that you've got in front of you here of what all it is that Trotter is going to be required to do with this task order. Kind of briefly here because there's so much here in this, as you can imagine, for 1.3 million dollars. He's going to be required to do 60% drawings on a lot of the work that's going to be required at the location of the buildings, the type of work that's going to have to be done, the sludge handlers that are going to have to be replaced. He's going to be meeting with staff on a weekly basis to go over all of this. And then he'll be coming up with final drawings to incorporate the design of the building up to a 95% final design. It is, as I said, it's a, it's a multi-year project. There's many different things he has to consider, electrical, mechanical. He's very qualified to do this. He's been our engineer of record for this project now for, I don't know how many years, Byron. I, I asked him and I forget.
Well, yeah, 2005, I believe, when we started talking about not even split the San Diego sewer evaluation.
Yeah, so he's been, he's been around for quite some time. He's very qualified to do this. He works for many other municipalities doing the same thing. And Byron is very happy with, with what Trotter's been doing with them so far. So unless anybody has any questions, I, we just thought we should talk about it a little bit because it is money that we do have to spend to meet the state regulatory requirements and the fact that the facility that we have down there is really getting old and there's a lot of stuff that needs to be replaced and repaired and, and brought back up to, brought back up to snuff in order to make things work the way they're supposed to work. So I move for approval of Resolution, what was it here? Resolution 16 dash 11 dash R, authorizing the execution of Task Order Number Eight with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the design engineering of the wastewater treatment plant, Task Order Number Eight, for an amount of $1,335,600.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 16 dash 11 dash R. Any discussion? Alderman Brown?
I just want to say thank you, Dave. But as you started speaking, I started getting up to speed with it. So I don't have any notes, but I do want to make a comment on, on the cost of it. I believe the cost of the, is, is $1 million and 300,000 is, is a construction cost, is part of the construction cost to, to get rolling, I believe. And generally in construction, a design cost for engineers is about 12%. And so this is a 20, 22 million dollar project that we have in front of us and their cost is about a million dollars. So we did get a good, a good bang for our buck on that. So I just wanted to let people know that also. And again, it's, it's, you know, construction here is going to take some time, like Dave said, and there's more construction coming behind it and it's, there's going to be more phases coming behind that also. The total bill is going to be roughly between 60 and 65 million dollars, but it's something we need to do. We've been talking about it since I believe it was 2009 when we were interviewing.
2008, yeah, when we, we recruited the SECs.
And so, so this is a step in the right direction, but thank you again, Dave.
You know, I would just offer up, as has already been said, this really, I think, is an investment in the future of Batavia. Not only in the future of our water treatment plant, but certainly the, in the future of our environment. A lot of the ideas that will be put into practice here when this is all, will certainly make, I think our plant now is pretty good as far as what we're discharging, but I think it'll be even better when we get this put into place. And I mean, you talk about something, you're leaving your children and your grandchildren. This is probably one of the better things that we could be doing as far as helping the environment. And a lot of people come in and spin a lot of ideas about the environment, but this is one where I think that really we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is and really trying to show that this is some serious intention by the city. I've been very impressed with what Trotter's put together. I think they've, he's tried to put us on, you know, the right course for dealing with, you know, new rules and regulations that we may get saddled with in the future. But certainly as I think going back to past administrations that certainly predated mine, back with Mayor Swanson and Mayor Brown, when they were spending and, you know, they were with the original sewer plant that had been there for many years and nothing had been done. So they really had to do a major transition to it. And I can remember them, you know, saying, this is the future and this is where we should be going with this and this is the right thing to do for Batavia, not only today, but Batavia 20 or 30 or 40 years ago. It's like the meetings I go to in Chicago and the constant observation that people make when we talk about all the cars on the road. We recently got the numbers thrown at us that over on 294, between 90 and 95th Street, there's 350,000 vehicles a day on that stretch of the road. And people say, what would we be like today had that not been built in the 1950s and 1960s? And what would we be today had there not been continuous reinvestment in that road over this period of time? And, you know, if you look at just the traffic we deal with on Wilson Street on a day-to-day basis, you know, I can't envision what kind of mess we'd have on our hands if we didn't have that interstate system. And I think certainly when it comes to things like this, you know, what will we be 30, 40, 50 years from now if we don't make some commitment to the environment for our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, that we are going to put into place some principles and practices here which will serve future generations long after all of us are gone. So I think this is a, a moment when you have to stop and reflect about what it is you really are doing here and what impacts it's going to have in the days ahead. So I would encourage us all to vote for this. Anybody else?
One last thing, just along those lines, Your Honor, is I spoke with Scott Trotter and he's also, in his design, is, is trying to foresee any future legislative actions regarding the phosphorus. And he's trying to just prepare for that also, so it doesn't catch us unawares when we continue our further construction.
Yeah, I've had the exact same conversation with him. All right, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of Resolution 16 dash 11 dash R. Kirk Coldero.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Starr?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 10 yes, no nos, four absents.
Your Honor, one last comment on that.
Mr. Brown?
I know Susan mentioned that she just had an opportunity to go down and meet with Byron and walk around the facility. And if anybody hasn't done it yet, you should do it. Because as we mentioned, it's a huge project that we're going to be undertaking. We should all understand what we're doing. We should all understand why we're doing what we're doing. And it just, it really, doesn't it bring it home, Susan, when you go down there and look at it and see what?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
So if you haven't had an opportunity to go down there, call up Byron. He'll make time for you.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, your item 11.
Thanks. While we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant, one item that the designers have discovered is that we could have some benefits by being able to utilize that portion of the city property that currently is the site of the food pantry and the clothes closet. It has a lot to do with the reorienting of the, you know, the regional bike trails that comes through the property. Additionally, while we're talking about that kind of space usage, we will probably be taking down the Baptist Church this year, which is going to be a, cause an issue for the toy drive and the storage for the toy drive as well as storage for Batavia youth baseball. So we've reached out to the people who run all of those programs and we will be coming to you probably next Tuesday to start a discussion about whether we can help those groups find, hopefully a common space for their, for their activities in the future or make a commitment to them that we could find, we'll work with them to find such a space. We most likely wouldn't need the space where the food pantry is until after the Christmas holidays of this year. So we have most of a year, but one way or another, finding some space or making the commitment, we do have to make that decision within the next 30 days at the latest because the engineers do have to start doing some design work. So we'll be bringing that before you. The food pantry has a new executive director, so, and like I say, with the Baptist Church coming down, it's an appropriate time to be talking about those things. Some of those programs can use more space anyway. So we're asking everybody to please be careful out on the streets. We had, with the snow last night, we had just a rash of, you know, just property damage accidents. The vast majority of them are because people are trying to rush to get somewhere instead of taking their time. The Tomley Building will be available soon. Once again, we'll have a discussion with you about the future of the building, whether to, again, try and put it out on the market or hold it as an incubator. The DuPage Cabinet business, which has been in the incubation space, will be moving to a larger space on Batavia Avenue next to Robyn's Flowers. So that's the second business that has hatched out of the incubator and taken a larger space. The first one was Seminity Studios. So we'll be bringing this to you for discussion soon. You may be seeing some bright yellow stickers out on the parkways. These are notices to people of illegally dumped or put out furniture, televisions, wood, et cetera, long before waste pickup days. We're just trying to communicate with people to be sensitive to maintaining the, the looks of our neighborhoods. And I think I've mentioned it many times and I think you've seen it out in the neighborhoods, that we just have a habit of some people just putting stuff out, hoping somebody will take it away. And I think there's some, we've seen mattresses out there and inevitably the day after somebody puts out a mattress or a couch, it rains like heck and it's just out there for a week or they don't put stickers and it's just really, it's gross compared to everybody else taking care of their yard. So we're going to do these so we can bring some attention to the people who are doing that. And lastly, I, I think a lot of people have seen this, but the, you know, the Historic Preservation Trust, along with Main Street America, compiled a list for Valentine's Day of six of the most romantic downtowns to walk through. And the city of Batavia, specifically River Street, was on that list last week for, for yesterday. And so that's a great thing. I guess we're in the age of people compiling lists. So it was good for us to make that, make that list. So that, that's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. McGrath? Thank you.
I just want to say it's rewarding to see the DuPage Cabinets successful.
Absolutely.
And that the, the incubator system seems to be working. I mean, that, that space, I mean, it's two businesses and Batavia's successful now.
Yep.
So thank you for that.
I think Chris is already working and we're certainly looking for anybody who has, who would like to do that, but we, we will have a discussion with you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, Committee Development, Alderman Brown?
Your Honor, the Committee of the Whole is going to meet tomorrow evening at 7:30. I have nothing for the community development portion of it. Plan Commission for this coming Wednesday, February 17th, has been canceled. Historic Preservation is scheduled for Monday at 5:30 and that is on February 22nd. The next Committee of the Whole meeting will be February 23rd at 7:30 and there's quite a list of items on there for community development. There'd be the Community Land Trust Discussion, 2015 Property Maintenance Code Discussion, Sidewalk Requirement Discussion. This is a carryover from prior meetings. The Variance Request for 515 Main Street and the Community Boundary Sign Discussion. Some of those memos went out in the last couple of days. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Alderman McFadden, you have anything in the absence of Alderman Etec?
Nothing for government services in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, very good. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. There is something on the agenda tomorrow night. I'm trying to get the agenda to come back up here for City Services. I will probably be a little bit late for that meeting as I have a basketball game to do tomorrow night for the girls' regional game. It is the permit to close the roadway for Loyalty Day. So not a big deal. Somebody else can do that if I don't get here in time. While I'm on that subject, they start at 6 o'clock tomorrow night. Everybody wants to come out before the meeting. Girls will be playing in a regional against either Hoffman States or Anderson Trail, who's in play right now out at the high school.
That's it?
That's it.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, it has here, you know, February 23rd, which is next week, that we're going to be discussing electric rates. But I thought agenda for tomorrow night, unless I didn't get the memo, we're going to be discussing Ordinance 16 dash 12 regarding rates. So I'm a little confused.
It's on the published agenda for tomorrow night. I've got it right.
It's on for tomorrow night, right?
It's on for tomorrow night.
Well, that's what we'll be discussing tomorrow night, Ordinance 16 dash 12, revision to the municipal code, basically maybe start, you know, trying to initiate another electric rate classification. And that's all we have.
Okay. All right, anybody on the council, anything else they wish to bring up? Alderman Stark?
I do. And it's on the homepage of the city of Batavia right now and it goes into effect on March 1st and that's text 911. And the reason I bring it up is it's a new enhancement to our emergency system in terms of how to reach TRICOM to report an emergency. And I bring it up because it's big news and it's something we've been working on a while, for a while. But the thing that I want to make sure, it's very clear and I'll bring it up multiple times, is it's the last way you should try to reach TRICOM. Always pick up the phone and actually dial 911 first. It's more to be used for emergencies if you can't talk, you know, but you need to be able to alert 911, that's a good time to use text 911. But the first and best way to reach dispatch is to pick up the phone and call them so that they can talk to you. So it's, I saw it in the paper, I saw it again today on our website, and I just wanted to bring up that, yes, that is going into effect on March 1st, but, and so many people do text things, but the best way to reach dispatch is to actually have a conversation with the person at the other end of the phone. So that was it.
Anybody else? Other business? We have any other business? Okay, going to the mayor's report, I just want to take a minute and share an observation. As all of you know, I spend a lot of time in Chicago and I've been there chatting with a whole bunch of folks. And there is a group in Chicago called the Metropolitan Planning Council. And they are a group of folks that look at the region in the future as to where things are going and what things should be done to kind of, and it's privately funded, so Council, and they are a group of folks that look at the region in the future, as to where things are going and what things should be done to kind of, and it's privately funded, so it, it doesn't have a political background to it, only from the perspective that political parties aren't voted to be a member of it. They're just, so, one of the folks that's very active in it, and there's a gentleman by name of King Harris, who is the donator of the Harris Theater at Millennium Park. And so, one time here, rather recently, he asked if he could come out to Batavia and tour Batavia. So, he came out, and he brought Nancy Furfer, who was the former mayor of Glenview, who did the Glenview Naval Air Station redevelopment during her time as, as mayor of Glenview. And so, I had him in my car for about two hours, almost three hours one day, and we bounced all the streets in Batavia. And Mr. Harris came away, just absolutely blown away by what he saw here from a very positive perspective, specifically in how we treat and care and restore older homes. And so, I have now had the opportunity twice in Chicago to be at meetings where Mr. Harris gets up and raves about Batavia and says, "You want to see how they're taking care of, somebody knows how to restore an older community, go to Batavia, they're doing an excellent job of it." This past, oh, probably the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity, in various things that I'm involved with, to be in a number of older homes in Batavia, and I've been on Washington Avenue, I've been on Van Buren Street, I've been on Wilson Street, I've been on South Prairie, I've been over on the west side on North Lincoln, on South Jefferson, on North Jefferson, on Mallory, and in every one of these place streets I just named, I was in a house that in the most recent past has been restored by some young couple who has bought the house in Batavia and come in here and started doing neat things with it. And where you're starting to see the granite countertops in the kitchen, and larger expansion of bathrooms, and many of them are taking like an old, an extra bedroom and making it into a big bathroom, and, and stuff like that. And just the recommitment that has been going on in this town toward restoring and saving old houses is just kind of heartwarming, in my view, to look at, to see what's happening here. And it, it's, I think it's going to have a significant impact. I've told the school superintendent last week, Bill, Bill was having a meeting, and I went in and chatted with him for a few minutes, told her, I said, you know, "You got to keep your eye on this situation, because I think you're going to get a lot of new, younger kids coming at you out of these older housing neighborhoods," which previously it was older senior citizens living there, and they've gone on, and these houses are being bought. And as all of you know what I do for a living, I have access to the multiple listing service, and I would share with you that I've, the last twenty-four hours, I've been on there looking at what's happening in Batavia, and it's right there, all these older houses that were on the market, and they aren't there very long, are being bought, and they're all, right now, there's a whole bunch under contract, there are attorneys and inspections, as they say in the real estate world, and it's the same thing about all these younger couples seem to be coming in here wanting to buy these houses. So, you know, if you go to other parts of the region, that's not going on. There's other places where we're not restoring them, we're boarding them up, or we're letting them be abandoned, and people are breaking in and doing goodness knows what, and, and some place, some towns are telling me they're, in a block, they'll have five to ten abandoned houses. Well, you'd be hard pressed to find anything abandoned, number one, in Batavia, but secondly, to see what's happening here is really something that I think all of you should take some credit and pride in, because it really is speaking to what's kind of happening with this town as far as restoring all this older property. And I, one of the secrets that we enjoy here is, is that about eighteen seventy, a little history lesson, when, right after the Great Chicago Fire in eighteen seventy-one, there was this huge demand to rebuild the city of Chicago in non-combustible material. So, here we are in eighteen seventy-one with all these limestone quarry opportunities. So, at one time, we were mining about ten quarries on both banks of the river, going on either east or the west side, and so they needed a whole bunch of healthy, strong people to come in here and beat this stone out of the ground. And so, there was a big movement to move a whole bunch of people from Scandinavia, you know, Denmark, Norway, and Sweden specifically, bring them over here and put them to work in the stone quarries. And that happened, and that's where a lot of the, the SON names in Batavia got their lineage here, is great-grandpa came over here on the boat to work in the stone quarry. Well, that went on for about twenty-five, thirty years, and then Chicago got all the stone it needed, and so suddenly there was, you know, a lot of people that were looking for something to do, and the natural inclination of most of these Scandinavian guys was, "Hey, I'm a carpenter, I know how, I know how to build things. Let's, let's start building some houses." So, we started building a lot of houses, right about eighteen ninety-five through, you know, World War One, and then right after World War One, it began again. And so, everybody always told me when I was a kid, these old Scandinavian guys, they really knew how to build a house. These are really sturdy, stout houses. So, today, I'm talking to some of these rehab guys that are in here now wanting to buy the old houses, and guess what I'm being told? Man, we can't believe how well these houses are built in Batavia. They got, you know, they're right on, and they were built right, and they're, they're a hundred years of age, but they'll last another hundred years, because these things, and they're accessible. You can get in, and you can find the flooring, you can tear it out, you can put in the new plumbing and the new ventilation for heating and air conditioning. You can do all this, and these houses all have some character, and you can change them, and all this other great stuff. So, it's all kind of a accident of our history, but it's, it's a trend that's very much alive in this town, and I just wanted to share it with you all that, I was at a meeting with the mayor of Geneva and St. Charles last Thursday, and we were talking about things to a group, and we, and they said the same thing in Geneva and St. Charles, that they kind of have this same, and it's all the areas right around the older downtown areas is where a lot of this seems to be happening, for about, you know, a ten-block wide area surrounding the east and west sides of town, going east or west, that's where all this stuff is located. And we've got a couple of folks sitting here that have done really nice jobs of restoring old houses. So, there, this is a real going trend right now in Batavia, and it's something I'm very pleased to see happening. And as long as we're talking about our history, I want to let you know that we've got at least four of you sitting here who have volunteered to be on the Flag Day Celebration Committee, and we've got some, if not interesting or educational, some fun stuff kind of plan. And we've got some people on the committee that are pushing to have an adult soapbox And that would be on, I guess we're talking about doing that on the Houston Street Hill. And then, on the night of, of, we're going to do it, I think, on two days, on June twelfth and June fourteenth. June twelfth is a Sunday, and they're going to have an old-fashioned ice cream social, which the fireworks committee is going to use as a fundraiser down here between about four and eight at night, and we're going to try to get everybody to come down. We got the community band, and some other entertainment groups are going to come down and put on some music and entertainment for us. And then, at some point that day, we're hoping that on the Houston Street Hill, we can organize a Human American Flag, in which we're going to have everybody stop, start at the base of, of Houston at Water, and go up the hill, and we're going to have thirteen stripes and fifty stars in a flag that then, if you stand down here, you'll be able to take a picture of it, because it'll be raised up above you, or if you've got a drone plane or something you can fly. We'll probably have a couple up there taking some pictures, and then maybe we can sell the pictures as a fundraiser, because we would like to do some permanent memorial to Dr. Segrand, who was the founder of American Flag Day, which started basically in Batavia a hundred years ago on June, June fourteenth, when Woodrow Wilson signed the first proclamation for American Flag Day. So, we've got that planned. And then, on the actual Flag Day, which will be a Tuesday night, we're going to do another concert in the park, and there's some people working on some special music things. And then, on that night, we're talking about having a luminary on the Riverwalk of seventeen hundred and seventy-seven candles, because it was seventeen seventy-seven, which was the day when the Continental Congress adopted the thirteen stripes and stars as the official American flag. And maybe within that seventeen hundred and seventy-seven candles, we can come up with some specific presentations about fifty states, and, you know, some other commemorative things that are around the American flag. So, we've really got, I think, some special things planned here, and hopefully, all of you will be around to help us do this and celebrate it. But we certainly are going to need some volunteers if we're going to put a human flag on the, on the Houston Street Hill on July, on June twelfth. But that's the big plan. So, just thought I'd kind of whet your appetite for what, and we're looking at Alderman Callahan to help us with the soapbox derby, so.
I know who I'm looking at.
And who? Alderman Wolf?
Yep. Okay. My wife's getting more insurance on me, so I can actually ride one.
Well, we, we may be back to you asking that we adopt this Flag Day thing as an access event, because we probably are going to need some insurance for it. So, we probably, well, I'll warn you, that's probably coming. So, all right, moving forward then, we need to have a motion for executive session for discussion of purchase and sale of electrical power and collective bargaining. Are we, are we going to do anything on purchase and sale of power? Okay. So, I'd ask for that motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Brown, second by McFadden, that we counsel in our executive session? I think all we have to do is shut the door.